Please stand for the question.
Public legalist is required of the United States of America and is the Republic for which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Loretta.
Here.
Councilor Loretta.
Here.
Councilor James.
Here.
Councilor Mitchell.
Here.
Councilor Donna.
Here.
Councilor Simsek.
President.
We also have our supervisors, Matt Roberts, Mary Kavanaugh, and Randy Henderson here.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to start with a proclamation. Whereas the City of Oneida Auxiliary began in nineteen fifteen to support the needs of the hospital, its staff, and patients by providing comfort care items that are not included in the operating budget. The auxiliary has hosted several fundraisers, special events and special events throughout the years to fund the needs of patients and residents alike. And whereas the Oneida Health Auxiliary's Light 'Alight' Program is a touching way to honor loved ones, special friends, and all the people who make life better through the generous donations received from the community members. And whereas the monetary gift in honor of those illuminaries purchased through the Light 'Alight' Program will directly benefit the patients and residents of the Oneida Health and its extended care facility in Oneida. That's my comparison. Whereas, whereas thanks to the generosity of donations received throughout the years, the auxiliary has been able to purchase recliners, bariatric chairs, and portable cardiac monitors and other items needed for patient and resident care. Whereas the auxiliary members, through their dedication and tireless efforts, support and make positive difference for Oneida Health and many patients and nursing home residents for the entire community, and now therefore I, Rick Rossi, Mayor, do hereby proclaim December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four as Oneida Health Auxiliary's Light 'Alight' Program Day. In honor in the City of Oneida and encourage all residents to join me in thanking Oneida Health Auxiliary for all they do to help our community. So, I have the co-presidents, Sandy Thurston and Maddy...
Marty Mallory.
Marty Mallory. I'm sorry.
I'm going to accept four of them.
Oh, perfect.
Sarah Wright.
Sarah Wright.
Thank you.
Always running into you.
I know. Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move right into our public hearing. A proposal for law to create a new chapter titled Murals in the City of Oneida. Motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes, any exceptions? First up is Ralph Kohler.
Good evening. By way of background, I am a federal employee with about forty years of experience in public policy, and I went to the same graduate school that Mr. Lyle went to. A vague law is a bad law. We should provide clarity in the law to the extent possible. In the spirit of transparency, I would ask that where did the proposal for this mural law came from and why not? I asked last week as well. Why does the originator believe that it's appropriate now? What research went into it? And who has comparable laws? And how do they compare? And an explanation from those of you who vote for it, why do you think this is a good idea now? Not specifically for the intent of the law, but the actual regulation as written. I don't think this mural is fit to purpose, and I don't believe you can make it fit to purpose with a couple of small changes this evening. I urge you to table this and rewrite it. Further, when I sent these comments to all of you this morning, Mr. Lowell responded, thank you, with a lengthy write-up explaining that it's not the council's or the city's intent especially to regulate speech or to be vague, but the comments that Mr. Lovell sent didn't explain how they actually, the law actually addressed my concerns and why they really weren't. So, my objection is first that it's vague. It's vague in numerous areas. First and foremost, there are First Amendment issues. The law contemplates having the city determine whether and how property owners can express themselves with their property. I don't know whether anyone will challenge this, but a vague law is a bad law, and it looks to me to be unconstitutional. Mr. Lovell said, "Our lawyers have looked it over, and it's all good." Okay. A review of the city's existing law signs under sign requirement has not a single word about content. It talks about the size and the placement. The closest thing to content is to make sure it's safe from a traffic perspective. I don't think this law should be asking about the relevance to the city's values, its culture, or its people. Those are expression. And while the city has some reasonable expectation of warrantability, I don't think it extends that far. I don't think we should be asking whether it enhances the site, because that's dangerously close to violating expression. And if you do, protests on murals on those topics are just going to make some people unhappy. If somebody puts up a Black Lives Matter, would somebody protest because it's not relevant to the city, because they don't like the content? How about a Blue Lives Matter? That seems to be entirely a speech issue to me. Then, as written, the sizing requirements also appear to be arbitrary. When I think of a mural, I think of a large image. And while you talk about the scale of the work, you don't give any metrics as you do for the sign regulations. You know, you don't tell me what the content of the sign I put on my front lawn is for...
You're running your three minutes.
Okay. You've got my entire comment. I would ask that it be placed in the record, and I'll be back.
Next up is Brian Borcher.
I even mind three minutes around if he has more to say.
So, scale is entirely undefined, and during the chicken controversy, I happened to be in Puerto Rico, who has some great murals. And I took a photo of a chicken mural, five floors. I sent you guys the photo. Is that of a proper scale? I don't know. How do you tell? There was another one I didn't take a photo of, which had a five-story picture of just a piece of a woman's face. In proper scale? I don't know. It's entirely arbitrary according to this law. I don't see how you're going to qualify artists or murals. What's qualification? I don't know what the qualification of the people who drew that mural are, and I don't know how you're going to measure that. You might be able to get away with listing what themes are allowed, but I recommend against it. Now, in Mr. Lovell's comments, you said, quote, "Regarding First Amendment rights, I want to emphasize that this policy was never intended to regulate or censor artistic expression. Rather, the guidelines focus on size, placement, and safety of murals." I don't know what unsafe mural is, if it's attached to the wall, but you focus on size and placement in part, but there's no metrics as there is in the sign law. And we're not here to talk about the intent. We're here to talk about what the language of the law actually is. I don't want the city to be the arbiter of expression, including suitability. I don't know what that means. There's no definition. Well-designed? I don't know. There's no definition. Sizing? No definition. Scale? No definition. And then, I don't know how culture, values, color, and theme apply. Mr. Lovell went on to say, "I want to assure you that the policy does not seek to evaluate or restrict the themes or the messages of murals." There's an explicit line in there that says, "One or more of natural, history of the city, city pride, or other natural themes." At its core, I think this regulation is an overregulation, and I don't think it's good for the city. I'd love to have a bunch of the spaces with beautiful artistic murals, but if the city is going to be the arbiter of those, I don't think it's going to go well. A vague law is a bad law. So, if you guys got to vote on this tonight, I think you should vote no. Thank you.
Next up is Nicole Melbou. Next up is Robert Prip.
Good evening. On these murals, the City of Rome had a beautiful one until it got taken down by a tornado. Utica has one block long, twenty-story side. No one's complaining about those. I don't understand, if someone's trying to make the city more pleasant, what's the problem? Why do we need even a law? Utica didn't have one. They paint that building every other year. Rome, they had a nice one for years until the tornado took it down. I don't understand what's the big problem. I don't get it. We should be able to, if you own the building, you should be able to paint a mural on it if you own it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Fred Myers.
Thanks. When I first read that last week, so I want to know if there's any changes to that paper from last week, the law?
Not from last week.
No changes or anything from last week? Contrary to his belief, when you go into the city planning board, zoning board of appeals, getting a widespread of community participation there, and they do have great insight to what to look at and see for mural. It's one of your most active boards. It's one of your most best boards out there to approve these murals. Now, yes, there'll be public comment at the time of the mural, and people keep track of the city website. They can go to those meetings. I'd also like to say that Nadine wrote quite a good law. It's not specific, doesn't talk about sizes, because buildings are different sizes. Things are different. It's very hard to say what one size would fit everything, especially the size of buildings with up and down. I'd like to see a few buildings with some murals on them like other cities do. I don't know if Nadine or her crew went to Syracuse, Utica, Fulton, Oswego, to see what the laws were, see if they could compare them, like he suggested, I know, under that case. But I do want to say that the planning commission, zoning board of appeals, is the proper place to have this, not at the sign board or any of those issues there. But it needs to be an inactive board with active people. They always get a quorum in. You don't always get quorums of the other boards that we had. That's why we had to put the zoning board and the planning commission together, so planning commission always had a quorum. This is what happened when the barbershop came. The planning commission, zoning board of appeals approved the mural, mural on the side of the building. That's where it should be, and that's where it should stay, is with the planning board, the zoning board of appeals. So, in my opinion, I'd like to see the law. A little vingus doesn't hurt, because if anybody was around with the, we did all that ten million dollar grant. We tried to get a form-based code in here instead of a strict written code in the law, so we couldn't have that flexibility of it in the city. So, I mean, we spent a lot of time on doing ten-foot variances, which is ridiculous, and fifty-foot property lets. So, that's my opinion. I just hope you vote yes for it. I like the law.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You have some last one for the public hearing? Can you get a motion to close that?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to get a motion to open the public hearing to discuss the submittal of the grant application for round nine of the Restore New York Communities Initiative.
Motion.
Second. We have no one on the, no one signed up for the public hearing? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is public comment. First up for public comment, we had, oh, that's not public comment. Public comment, first up is Robert Prip.
Good evening. This chicken permit, who wants to get it, what happens if they don't follow the rules? Can we get something in there that they lose their permit and still chase and hoops, trying to get it pulled? We need something in the law with, for the people that don't follow the rules with the chickens. I hate to keep bringing this chicken thing up, but you guys don't have to deal with it. You know what I'm saying? There should be some type of rule. If you violate, then you lose your permit. Second of all, with the police department, we do need to get their pay close to Rome or something like that, because we train them, and all they do is have to stay here for a year, and then go somewhere else to make more money. Why should we do all the training, and then they leave? I get they need to make more money, but if we get it close to here, then they won't have to leave. We need, we got, what we're doing is not working. We're losing too many officers. There are police officers and women, so let's do something. Thank you.
Next up is Joe Magglio.
Good evening. I'm here to speak tonight regarding the recent changes to the city code regarding the mobile food vendors. Previously, there were two public hearings regarding these changes. The first was just to designate the local law to amend the code, where no one spoke. The second was to adopt that amended language, again, where no one spoke. That language referenced vendor locations, but those locations were never made public until after the resolution was passed, which was at the last meeting. And in hindsight, which is a beautiful thing, I feel that section four C of that code is overly restrictive. Four C one mentions locations shall be specifically designated and approved from time to time by resolution of the common council. Four C two says vendors must choose the location, but must adhere to only the approved list when searching that public place. And there's the rub. All four designated locations per that previous resolution, number twenty-four two ninety, have logistical issues, in my opinion. While I hope to share my concerns on all of those locations, I only want to emphasize one tonight, and that's location number one. It's described as Freigh House Alley. That location shown is neither located on Freigh House Alley or on James Street, as the location map shows. The name of that street is Oneida Street. Now, the Oneida Rail Trail Plaza was City Center Plaza, as it has been both often called, was both envisioned as and designed as a public gathering space. The bench, the bike rack, the ornate picnic table, the landscaped seating wall, as well as the informational kiosk there, were all put there for that purpose. That informational kiosk has a community bulletin board on one side, Oneida Rail Trail, Lenox Rail Trail, Erie Canal Trail map on the plaza side, as well as the spectacular, large historic sign on the East Railroad Street side. Now, that historical sign is one of seven signs total in this city, spread through downtown, on the rail trail, on Erie Canal Trail, to highlight the rich railroad canal and industrial history of our city. Lenny, the owner and operator of Firehouse Hots, has always referred to the plaza since those improvements ever done in twenty nineteen. He refers to it as his dining room. And personally, when I drive down Main Street on a nice summer day, and I see a number of folks sitting there enjoying their lunch in and around that plaza, that shows me as a, that we are ahead by written welcoming downtown. Those designated locations for additional food vendors need to be located immediately adjacent to that plaza, not moved away from it. Additional locations for that area can be both added in the existing location for Firehouse Hots immediately to the east, where he has historically been located, as well as against the curb on Oneida Street immediately adjacent to the plaza. And while I sincerely trust that those locations were discussed in good faith, I believe that the members of the public, as well as the future food vendors that may consider those locations, should be part of an ongoing discussion. So, I encourage the city to welcome those comments and consider any and all reasonable changes offered by them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ralph Kohler.
First, my compliments to the mayor. The cookie thing was awesome. It was a great move. Second, I'd like to give a couple of thoughts regarding the ongoing controversy regarding the barbershop versus the codes, and maybe we could move beyond it. I think there's consensus here that it remains an embarrassment to the city. However, in reading the public reporting on the topic and listening to Mr. Vargas at the last meeting, it seems obvious to me that we can move this pretty far forward right now. I think I heard Mr. Vargas and maybe the mayor say that codes has never asked to come and inspect the property again. And I think that the city, Mr. Lovell, on behalf of the codes department, could just say, "Hey, can we come and inspect the property?" Now, I don't really care about this whole thing. I just want it to not be in the newspaper, so we can focus on more important topics. But if Mr. Vargas, if Mr. Lovell asked if the codes could just take a look at it so we can get this over with, and Mr. Ross says, "Well, not the best," okay, then maybe we can move on. Just a thought. Next, let me address the zoning issue before. I wasn't intending to argue that it should be in the signs approval, only that the law should be patterned similar to the signs with regard to the approval of the content of the signs. And with regard to scale, I not only agree with you, I don't think we should be talking about scale in that law at all, because I think the best murals I see are ones which take the entire side of the building. So, we mostly agree, I think, except I think we should take some of the stuff out of that law. Next, I feel like I need to ask this every time until we pay some attention to it. What's going on with the catapult? You guys talked about it at the last meeting, at the budget hearing, excuse me, but unless I missed it, we don't have a plan for it, and not a plan to sell it, not a plan to do anything with it. We don't have a plan at all. Hopefully, you're working on it in the background, and I wish you'd be transparent, tell us what's going on, but if not, I look forward to hearing what you come up with soon. And finally, Merry Christmas.
Next up is Peter Hegel.
Good evening. The charter says the proposed budget must be presented on or before October thirty for the following year. Why not start the two thousand twenty-six budget on January two, two thousand twenty-five? November and December are just not enough time to deal with a seventeen million dollar budget. Why not have a serious effort to educate the public about the city's finances and have an opportunity for the public to discuss with city leaders what the public wants, needs, and most importantly, is willing to pay for? The most recent budget process was, in my opinion, a mix of serious consideration and grandstanding. The news media reported that Councilor Loretta had over twenty ideas or suggestions. I made a Freedom of Information request for those ideas and suggestions, and her response was twenty-eight pages of emails, primarily between the councilors. Councilor Loretta's la, Councilor Loretta's list, say that three times fast, appears to have appeared in an email from Mr. Loretta dated November twenty-one. All of those ideas deserve consideration. They deserve to be aired before the public, the pros and the cons, what the business plan is for each idea, what is it going to save and what is it going to cost. There was advocacy in those emails to services not required, but no definition or explanation of what is not required. Shared services or consolidation was mentioned. Again, no, nothing specific. Consolidate what? With whom? And again, what is the economic plan? What is the, quote, business plan? We're not a business, obviously. So, some of it was just filler. It was just, you know, I'm going to say something, so I think it makes me look good. Been there, done that in the city budgeting process. Selling the callet and other city land was mentioned. Again, no specifics. Selling capital assets to fund a current-year budget is a one-time deal. You can only sell the callet if that was decided once, unless it comes back, because whoever bought it can't or won't pay the taxes because it isn't economically feasible for what they want. There was discussion about keeping taxes as close to zero as possible, but there was no discussion about the consequences of doing that. And as best as I can tell, I'm the only, I was the only mayor to actually cut a program when I was mayor. We cut the senior van, because to do it prospectively in a method that implied what the Americans with Disabilities Act was going to cost a lot of money, and there wasn't any extra, quote, money to do that. I understand the desire to reduce or eliminate a tax increase for a budget that's attacked that is in an election year, but I submit that what should be the primary consideration is what is in the best interest for the long term of the city, not particular political expedience.
Mr. Hegel, you are over with.
Okay. I call upon the council to lead our, to lead our residents in a thorough consideration of what we need, what we want, and what we're willing to pay for. Use the year. Do a better job than has been done for a long time in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last one for public comment. Any old business from the council?
I just actually, I just want to address the cap. Mr. Lovell, Lovell and I have been discussing that, and is, we're working on it.
Thank you.
Move on to the reports. I'm just going to say Merry Christmas. We have one more meeting, but it's going to be the last day of the year, so take time with your family. Enjoy it. Anything from the supervisors?
Yeah, I hear Mayor Rossi's statement. Hope everybody has a great holiday season. Merry Christmas to you and your family. We have, our budget we passed is underneath the tax cap, two and a half percent. I know that the budget from the city is higher than that, but last year it was sort of a flip-flop situation. Our budget was, our increase was higher than the, than the city, so it seems like a two-cylinder engine-type thing. So, kudos to this city for working hard to keep their costs low. Second thing is, the only other thing is sales tax, which we watch like a hawk. It's been going up so much for the last four or five years. We're probably about one or two percent above our budget, but other than that, it's business as usual in the county, getting ready to pause some roads. That's it.
Thank you. Move on to our city manager. Do you have any comments?
I do. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin by speaking directly to the heart of what makes our city and its government truly great, the spirit of collaboration. In these challenging times, it's easy to get caught up in division and disagreement, but I implore you today with a simple but powerful message. Collaboration in politics is just not a lofty ideal. It is an absolute necessity of the future of our city. As members of this common council, all of you are entrusted with the sacred duty of representing the people of Oneida. We are here to serve our community, and together we can move our city forward, but only if we set aside personal differences, work collaboratively, and unite... we set aside personal differences, work collaboratively, and unite around the common good. Now, collaboration does not mean agreeing on everything. It means having the strength and maturity to listen to one another, to respect differing opinions, and to understand that our shared goal is to make Oneida a better place for all of its residents. Our residents expect us to work together, not as rivals, but as partners in service. When we come together with mutual respect, we create solutions that reflect the true spirit of Oneida, unity, progress, and care for our community. As we face the important decisions ahead of us, I urge each of us to remember John F. Kennedy, when he said not to let us seek the Republican answer or the Democratic answer, but the right answer. What matters is not the ideology we box ourselves into, but the responsibility we have to the people of Oneida. Together, we can achieve incredible things, but only by working in collaboration, keeping the interests of the people first, and moving forward as one. And this now leads me to where we are tonight. As many of you know, the state of New York imposes a tax cap on local governments, restricting the added property tax levy increase. And while this cap is meant to limit tax burdens, it has also placed the city of Oneida in a dangerous position. Without the ability to override this cap, we will be forced to make decisions that will hollow out the services and the infrastructure that make this city the vibrant, thriving community that we all cherish. Let me be clear, this is not just about taxes, this is about the future of Oneida, and the time for action is now. One of the fundamental principles of good governance is the ability to maintain a responsible and fiscally sound tax rate. As Benjamin Franklin wisely said, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." In this case, a responsible tax rate will help us prevent a future crisis where we are forced to make drastic cuts to essential services, cuts that would harm our residents, destroy our community's character, and derail our city's future growth. We must be honest with ourselves. If we do not maintain our current adopted budget, we risk draining our general fund, losing critical staffing, and abandoning the services that our residents depend upon. Our police, fire, and public works department, the very backbone of safety in our community, are at risk. I know that any tax rate increase is uncomfortable, but let me assure you, a 7.5% tax rate increase is the most responsible middle-of-the-road adjustment we can make to keep Oneida moving forward. It is not excessive. It is, nor is it, designed to punish our taxpayers, it is an essential step to ensure that we can maintain services and keep our city strong. And to put this in perspective, the average assessed home value in Oneida is approximately $113,373. With a 7.5% increase, the average property owner will pay $81 more per $100,000 of assessed value annually, or about $6.75 per month. Let that sink in. A modest increase of less than $7 a month, just a cup of Starbucks, can keep our city from unraveling. I believe we have reached an inflection point. Winston Churchill said, "To each that comes in their lifetime a special moment, they are fatally tapped on the shoulder and offered the chance to do something, something special, unique to them and fit for their talents." What a tragedy if that moment finds them unprepared or unqualified for that which could have been their finest hour. Our moment is here, and the time to act is now. If we fail to tax responsibly, we will regret it for years to come. By not working to maintain our adopted budget for 2025, here are the immediate and devastating consequences we will face. Critical staffing levels cannot be maintained. We cannot afford to lose the vital services that make Oneida the community we love. If we are forced to make cuts, we risk eliminating critical staffing levels across essential departments, including public safety, parks, recreation, and public works. The safety of our city, the quality of our parks and events, and our ability to provide the services that our residents expect will be compromised. And make no mistake, if painful cuts must be made, I strongly believe that we cannot afford to eliminate our Parks and Rec departments. Our parks are the heart of this city, they host events that bring our community together, they provide our children with safe places to play and grow. Our residents love the events, the activities, and the sense of community that our Parks and Rec teams work tirelessly to build. Losing this department would strip Oneida of what makes it special. We have reached a tentative contract agreement with the PBA, but if we do not maintain our adopted budget, we will be unable to honor that agreement. This will force us to go back to the drawing board with the police union, risking disruption to our police force and potentially diminishing the safety of our community. We are already at critical staffing levels, with morale eroded and many of our experienced officers leaving for enabling PDs. I cannot overstress the critical significance of moving forward with this contract. Similarly, we will not have the funds necessary to begin negotiations with our fire unit if we cannot offer competitive contracts to our firefighters. We risk losing the skilled professionals who keep us safe during emergencies. Our fire department is an essential part of our city's safety, and we cannot afford to let it weaken. Depleting our general fund balance, the most dangerous consequence of all, is that without the override that we had passed, we will be forced to deplete our general fund balance to make ends meet. In doing so, we will destroy our credit rating, and let me be clear, our credit rating is our lifeline. A strong credit rating allows us to borrow money at favorable rates, making it easier and cheaper to invest in infrastructure, emergency services, and community development. Without a strong credit rating, borrowing costs increase, and taxes on our residents will ultimately rise to cover those costs. We cannot afford to let this happen. Thomas Jefferson once said, "The government you elect is the government you deserve." The government you elect is the government you deserve. We deserve a government that is capable of making tough but responsible decisions, a government that has the foresight to maintain its financial health and ensure that our future is secure. In conclusion, ladies and gentlemen, councilors, tax cap override and our adopted budget is not just a matter of dollars and cents, it is a matter of our protecting the city's very soul. It is about safeguarding the future of Oneida, preserving our character, and ensuring that we can provide the services that make our community strong and connected. We have a chance, right now, to make the responsible decision that will protect our city for generations to come. By maintaining the adopted budget, we ensure that we can maintain critical staffing, honor our contracts, and protect our city's financial future. We will keep Oneida moving forward, maintaining the services and infrastructure that makes us who we are. Many years ago, in a letter to his son, Abraham Lincoln wrote that the best way to predict your future is to create it. As we face this moment, we can create a future for Oneida that is strong, vibrant, and sustainable, but we must act today. I urge you all to support our adopted budget, let us preserve the heart and soul of Oneida before it's too late. Thank you.
All right, can I get the approval of minutes for December 4, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I get the approval of warrant number 25.
Resolved in warrant number 25, shots and ACH payment, in the amount of $977,277.56 as audited by the legislature committee. Are hereby approved for payment in the usual manner, as discretion of the comptroller or third party duly retained by the city of Oneida to perform such services.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll now turn the meeting over to our city clerks, standing up.
Item number one, monthly reports. Receive and place on file the monthly reports from the city clerks, city engineer, codes department, fire department, parks and rec department, and police department.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's pass.
Item number two, adopt local law. Adopt a local law imposing a three-month moratorium on wind energy conversion system uses within the city of Oneida. This would be a roll call.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ready? Mayor Rossi?
Yes.
Counselor Zerba?
Yes.
Counselor Loretty?
Yes.
Counselor Hitchens?
Yes.
Counselor Winchell?
Yes.
Counselor Pagano?
Yes.
Counselor Sinset?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number three, adopt local law. Adopt a local law creating a new chapter titled Murals in the City of Oneida.
Any discussion?
I'd like to motion to table this.
I'll second it.
Motion has been tabled. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, agreement, which one of us?
Yes.
Your agreement, okay? We'd like to, you know, announce some of those. They're going to go into executive session with possible action after the meeting, so that one is something that will be done in the regular meeting at the end, after executive session. Item number six, city historian agreement. Authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Ariel Barrow. I'm sorry, five, I'm sorry about that. Item number five, agreement Nelson Associates approve the execution of an agreement which shall be effective December 6, 2024, by and between the city manager and Nelson Associates Architectural Engineering for Professional Engineering Services for the City of Oneida Water Department.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows and any abstentions? Motion's pass.
No, I don't know. City historian agreement authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Ariel Barrow as the Oneida City Historian as per the 2025 City of Oneida budget.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows and any abstentions? Motion's pass.
Item number seven, budget transfers and amendments. Approve the budget transfers and amendments as outlined by the comptroller or third party duly retained by the City of Oneida to perform such services.
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows and any abstentions? Motion's pass.
Item number eight, agreement authorize the city manager to sign the 2025 to 2029 Seneca Fields Apartments Hydrant Agreement and the 2025 to 2029 Green Empire Apartments Hydrant Agreement.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows and abstentions? Motion's pass.
Item number nine, contract. Authorize the city manager to sign a contract with the New York State Unified Court System for Court Cleaning and Minor Repairs at the Oneida City Court for the period of April 1, 2024 through March 31, 2025. They're on a different calendar year.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows and any abstentions? Motion's pass.
Item number 10, contract authorize the city manager to sign a revised agreement in a form approved by the city attorney for an extension of six months, January 1, 2025 through June 30, 2025, with Chris Henry for consulting services to be rendered in connection and to assist with those duties performed by and assigned to the city planning development director.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows and any abstentions? Motion's pass.
Item number 11, Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program. Apply, approve to apply for funding under round nine of the Restore New York Communities Initiative Grant Municipal Grant Program for the Rehabilitation Madison Street.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows and any abstentions? Motion's pass. Any new business for council? All right, we're going to, can we get a motion to go into the executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Yes. Who are you?
Yeah, for the purpose of reviewing collective bargaining negotiations and the employment of particular employees.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows and abstentions?
Thank you guys all for coming. Please grab a cookie on your way up.